I'm going to call the AIR Select Board to order for Tuesday, June 20, 2023. This meeting and hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or in or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcasts unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance meeting accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-0793 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@AIR.MA.U.S. or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. I'd like to ask everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
I have none. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Agenda is approved. We do have one announcement this evening. Independence in the Air will begin on Friday, June 23 and run through Sunday, June 25. There will be movie night at Peroni Park, parade, food, vendors, activities, and entertainment at Peroni Park, and a local celebrity softball game. Come on, join all the fun. All right. So the first item before we get to public input is recognition of student t-shirt designers for the Independence in the Air celebration. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to select person Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could ask Thomas Angers and Tori Colley to please come forward. It's okay, we don't bite. This is great. Okay. So, has been said, this weekend is the Independence in the Air celebrations, three-day celebration. And a call went out, now you're both in fifth grade, is my understanding? Okay. So, a call went out to have a design made for a t-shirt. Tori, yes, sorry. Tori did the patriotic heart, and you did the firecrackers. And they were so great that it was decided to merge them, which will be the design that you've seen on some of the signs and some of the t-shirts that you'll see being worn. So not only did you do a great design, okay, but the fact that it got merged into one shows the teamwork, okay? And it is a perfect example of what we're celebrating in this country, the independence, okay? So, on behalf of the Board, I just want to say thank you very much, and we recognize you with certificates of recognitions to Tori Colley and Thomas Angers. In recognition of your work in designing the patriotic heart and firecracker t-shirt for the Independence in the Air celebration, on behalf of the citizen of the town of AIR, thank you for your hard work and creativity. Signed, Scott A. Hood, Chair. Myself, Janice Lee Livingston, Vice Chair, and Sean C. Copeland, Clerk. This date, the 20th day of June 2023, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Let me just move those chairs away. If we need to move my bag to the, you know, go ahead.
Okay. Can we move this further?
Yes, yes.
That's just old news.
Anything else you want to remodel?
Well, you know. Do you want to tell us anything about your design?
Strong silent type, I like that.
Well, thank you again. Oh, you have something to present? Okay, wait a minute.
So, my name is Rebecca Willamson, and I am part of the Independence in the Air Community Group. And as you so wonderfully said, we did look for something that would bring everybody together in this community. This three-day festival is for just so much that we have missed over the last couple years. We're really hoping that everybody enjoys it. And the fact that we could have these two little ones present with such beautiful things, coloring and such, we just really appreciated it. So we like to give them their shirts, and then we also have a little gift bag from Little B Bookstore. So, on behalf of the AIR Community Group, here's your bag. And I believe this is Thomas's. Thank you. And the six others. Congratulations. What do you say we get out of here?
Thank you again. And hope to see everybody this weekend. It's going to be a good time.
Is anyone here for public input this evening? Dennis?
I have, I have.
Can you, do you mind coming up, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, these are good microphones.
Dennis Karim, Pleasant Street.
Thank you, Dennis, how are you?
Good, thanks. I have input on a couple of things that are on the agenda. Should I wait for the agenda items themselves and then?
It's probably better.
Yeah, 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 I think it would be better.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Anyone else for public input? All right, excellent, thank you. Moving on, so we have Dan Fanchelwick, Director of Department of Public Works.
How are you?
Hey, Dan, welcome.
Hey, so I'm here with Emily Sherbo, she's with Ty &amp; Bond. And the first item we have on the agenda is our stormwater utility update and brief presentation, so we have a PowerPoint.
I'll get this out, all right. Do you want to do it?
Drive, sure.
Sure. Or you can use this. Let me just get this. Can we just check to see if everyone can see it at home?
Yep. Can everyone see the presentation at home?
No, Mr. Chairman, Pauline Conley, sorry, I couldn't get a chance to raise my hand, but no, it's just seeing the file explorer right now.
Thank you, Pauline.
All right, this is how we did it before, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so DPW, we're here to give an update on the stormwater utility reevaluation. And so Carly will go, I get the control here, next slide. So, the agenda for our presentation tonight, you know, we'll provide an update and obtain feedback from the Board on our next steps as we're reevaluating and looking to reestablish the stormwater utility. There'll be introductions, AIR Stormwater Program, a little bit of history I'll go through, and then Emily will get more into the why stormwater utility, local and regional comparison, impervious area, work to date in our next steps. So, AIR Stormwater Program, since 2003, we've had our MS4 permit, which we've presented on several times, but the minimum control measures in there are listed here, public education and outreach, a big one, IDDE, and local oversight of construction sites. And you know, as part of that permit, we do have our store, our local stormwater bylaw, which we recently updated as part of the newest MS4 stormwater permit. So there's more info available on our stormwater on the web. So a little bit of history as far as it relates to the stormwater utility, kind of bringing us to date why we're here today. So originally, the town of AIR, in 2011, the town meeting approved a stormwater utility enterprise fund, but a funding mechanism had not been developed, so that still needed to be in place. Around 2014 and 15, a stormwater utility committee was developed, and they put together a funding mechanism, working with consulting firm based on impervious area. This included public meetings, outreach, input from various stakeholders, businesses, et cetera. The proposed funding mechanism was presented to the Select Board, and at the time, it was voted to continue to fund the stormwater through the general fund, and subsequently, town meeting voted to eliminate the stormwater utility. And so why are we back here? So in 2019, DPW presented up stormwater updates to the Select Board, and including kind of the financials, how much we're spending, what we really need to do. And at the time, the Board supported revisiting the stormwater utility. So in 2020, capital funds were voted at town meeting to obtain consultant support to revisit the stormwater utility, what we're doing now. And between 2021 and 22, we developed a stormwater asset management plan, which was predominantly grant-funded. And that's really, gives us some good eyes and understanding of what we have in our stormwater system. It was a good, a good snapshot, and also costs associated with improvements we need to do. So that really helps when we're, when we're looking at developing a stormwater utility and expected costs. So that's, that brings us to today. DPW contracted with Ty &amp; Bond to help reevaluate, reevaluate the stormwater utility. And Ty &amp; Bond has done this for several communities, so it's not their first go. So I'll let Emily go from here.
Sure, all right, thanks, Dan. So Dan covered a lot of the why already, just in terms of completing that stormwater asset management plan, which really did take a good look at the condition of, of the town's drainage infrastructure, and came up with a more proactive approach to infrastructure repairs and replacement, but in also the MS4 program, which we're expecting a new general permit to come out for public comment this year. It will always be more stringent every time there's a new permit, so you know, setting this up now sets up the town for success. The benefits of a stormwater fee are pretty well established. It's just like a water sewer or electric utility, so you have a dedicated source of revenue every year, but it's considered stable. It is often more equitable and fair, you know, that's a primary advantage because it's based on your stormwater impact, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, not on your property value or taxes, and it does include tax-exempt properties in the rate base. It's flexible, and then it can pay for all aspects of the program, unlike, you know, one-time grants or loans. And then you have the ability of adopting a credit policy, so you can actually give people incentives to do, you know, to help with the program on their own properties and to mitigate stormwater runoff. One of the first questions people always ask is, who's doing this, who, you know, and where are they? It's not a new concept in the United States, it's a little bit newer in New England. So across the United States, there's about 2,000 stormwater utilities. When you look at New England, there's, there's fewer because it's, you know, there are less, you know, local drivers, I guess, right, from the regulatory context. So there's about 20 at this time in Massachusetts with new utilities going to affect every kind of town meeting season, so that number's probably ticked up more like 25 at this point. There, when you're adopting a fee, there has to be a clear nexus among the program, cost of service, the user fees, and then the customer benefits. So there are certain ways that are established to do that. And impervious area is the most common method to assess stormwater fees in the United States. So you can't, unlike water, you can't just measure your stormwater runoff, there has to be a different way to do it. So we're going to get a little bit into the science of impervious cover here, but we'll come back to this concept, often people have questions about this. So, impervious cover, the relationship between impervious surfaces and degradation of water bodies is pretty well established. So that graph you see there is from 2003, from the Center for Watershed Protection. So as your percent impervious area in a watershed goes up, generally speaking, your water bodies become degraded in terms of water quality, the stormwater runoff is faster, it's warmer, it's carrying trash and pollutants. So AIR is about 17% impervious, so you would be sort of just generally in that impacted category, and we see that with the Clean Water Act, impaired water bodies designation in AIR. So we can already see stormwater impacts related to imperviousness. So we put in this presentation a few examples of how we would use impervious cover to assign an equivalent residential unit, is how we've been typically setting up a fee, and that's pretty, pretty typical in Massachusetts, in New England, and across the country. So it's the median amount of impervious cover on a single-family residential property. So in AIR, it is 3,200 square feet of impervious area, so that would be your basis for your fee. So we would scale that up potentially for larger properties, so a flat fee for single-family residential, and then more for non-single-family residential. So this on your screen is a typical, it's almost exactly one ERU, and you can see the impervious cover as it's measured, and you can see what that house looks like, so you can get a feel for what that, that typical property looks like. Then when we start to look at non-single-family residential, we've given you an example on the left of St. Andrew's Church, which when we measure the impervious cover, it is more than 20,000 square feet of impervious. So an impervious cover is the roof, parking, it can be patios, it can be a pool, so anything where the, the water cannot penetrate the surface. That comes out to be seven times the single-family residential, so seven ERUs. So if you said one ERU is going to pay $100 a year, this would be $700 a year, so it would just scale up exactly. This next example on your right is a, the Willow's condos, where you can see there's 93 ERUs, and that would be spread across all of those different units. So that's just generally how the fee structure might work, and there are a number of ways. I'll actually show some examples on the next slide. Every community has done this in a similar fashion, but they're all a little bit different. So when you have your slides, if you have this electronically, there's links to all of these different examples in, in the PowerPoint presentation. But so I gave you, you know, Newton, Bellingham, Milton, Westford. If you look at Bellingham and Westford, they're also using an equivalent residential unit. It's approximately the same size as yours, so it's, you know, not too terribly different. Bellingham does have that flat fee per year, so $96 per year for the single-family residential and condos, and then a proportional fee for non-single-family residential. Westford, when we were adopting their fee, the Select Board decided they wanted a tiered structure for their single-family residential because they had very different single-family residential, from like a small ranch or a cape to some like much larger single-family homes, so they thought that would be more fair to do. Keep in mind that that is more administratively complex to manage something like that, and you also need very, very accurate impervious cover. So we're working right now at, we're looking at different rate structure alternatives for AIR. So these are just, again, examples. In terms of next steps in timeline, and this is somewhere where we'd love to get some input tonight, we are looking at convening an advisory group, so Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, you know, I've initially thought about putting together an advisory group because there'll be a lot of policy decisions that need to be made, like for example, what is considered impervious, is a gravel drive considered, and so on and so on, and the type of rate structure we do. So members of that would likely be myself, the town engineer, conservation agent, local business leader, our IPP representative, someone from the town manager's office, and I'd hope a Select Board member, also maybe three residents and a planning board members, who I was thinking about, that could work well on an advisory group for this, applicable to this type of activity. So that's one thing that we kind of want to get some input on from the Board as we move forward to, to sort of get the word out on this and get input on, on the stormwater utility.
Some technical aspects of this that we're, we're actively working on at this moment are refining the budget projections, so we've pulled together the past five years of costs, and we're looking into the next five years based on the plans that are in place right now. And then, you know, we're trying to make sure that those annual costs aren't too, you know, too high, so we're, we're looking at how can we keep those costs manageable and practical, but still sufficient to cover the program needs. And then, once those revenue projections are in place, we will look at different rate structure alternatives. We're planning to propose a couple of different alternative rate structures, first to the advisory group, and then we will come back to the Select Board. And then we would be looking for town council guidance. There's going to be either a bylaw, or sometimes a regulation is sufficient to establish this under mass general law, there's enabling legislation, but we want to make sure it fits with your current code, and then a town meeting warrant article. And then, public outreach is top of mind with this, because nobody, we can't blindside residents and businesses with a new fee. So we're working on some website content, some educational materials, we'd like to have a stakeholder workshop, and then additional meetings with the Board. And then, we have, we were initially thinking that this could be ready, if we really, if we worked hard, go to special town meeting in 2023, but as an alternative, Dan and Matt said we should consider annual town meeting 2024, so that's another place we'd like to get your input on. Again, to make sure we are allowing for, the technical piece is easy, it's the, it's the public process that, you know, needs to be very deliberate. And then last, once we know the, the stormwater utility is in place, develop that credit policy and abatement process and other customer service procedures. Okay. And with that, that's the end of our presentation.
I have two questions, and then I'll pass it over to you, is that okay? So the first question, I kind of, I guess goes more to the timing, because right now we're in June, and a special town meeting for 2023 is like four months away, is that even remotely feasible to pull together an advisory group and do all that work, or should we just kind of look at next spring?
Yeah, I think we're getting too tight on time, and I think looking at the spring is what I would recommend doing, especially with the substantial public outreach we really need to do for this.
I appreciate your honesty on that.
Thanks.
And then the second question is, so part of what the advisory group's going to look at is, you know, how much the stormwater costs, so I just want to confirm, this enterprise fund is actually, is going to replace a lot of the costs that we're seeing going through capital at this point for stormwater, or would this be in addition to what we've been putting through capital?
So this would account for the capital costs, the fee, so this would cover capital, yeah. It would, it would have its own capital stabilization, just like the other enterprise funds.
All right, great, and I just want to bring that up to understand, it's not like additional money we're looking to spend, we're already spending the money, we're just looking to get a definitive source for that. Janice?
Well, I'm glad you talked about the special town meeting 2023, because I just don't see that happening, it's too rushed feeling. So, yeah, so I kind of lost my second question, but I guess what I would like to know, because this is considered, you know, a tax on rain, is what, what residents call it, is a tax on rain, okay? And that's what even years ago, when it was first brought, because there wasn't advisory group, it came to the Board, and it was shut down because it was too complicated, the way it was being discussed at that time, okay? So I, I, a couple of questions. So you're talking about like the runoff from the roof of a house, right? Hitting a driveway, okay? What about if the owner has a rain barrel so that it's not hitting the driveway? Because it's going into a gutter that's going into a rain barrel. How, is that something that would be a part? So this, this also could be, as far as on the advisory committee, things to think about.
Right.
You know, so, and then, again, like you said, you know, what type of material is considered impervious? So years ago, the confusion was, is how it was presented, is that, you know, somebody from DPW was going to go out and measure the driveways, so there was concern about, you know, people saying, oh, okay, now I got to get rid of my big driveway to get a small driveway. So I think these are things to just make sure that is, you know, being thought out. And then, and then it was said that they had, that DPW had already measured the driveway. No one ever came into my driveway, I just want to point that out. So I don't know, it was a very convoluted thing, so I think it's very important that the public process be very clear, and that questions like this at least be thought of.
Yeah, that's great feedback. I think that those are things that we could put into like a frequently asked question on the website, and then explain it at meetings going forward, because it really is, we're in the weeds of it day to day, the stormwater world, and you forget that everyone's not paying attention to how, you know, this is, Natalie Konski's here, she's our project manager, but she works in GIS, so I mean, this is all being measured through, you know, satellite imagery and flyovers, so it's not, no one's going to go and do like a survey grade measurement of your impervious area, it's, you know.
Which, if I could.
Please, no, please.
Which, I'm, I'm sorry, I kind of cut you off, I didn't mean to, but I would have lost my thought. So when you said like satellite, satellite imagery, okay? So that you have to be cautious on, because if I go to Home Depot to look as to whether or not my house can have solar, they're going to tell me no, because there's a tree in the way.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, I'm standing there at my house going, what tree? What tree are you talking about? What angle is your satellite from? So I think that that's very important, when you're talking about the satellite imagery, that the angle of the satellite does make a big difference, okay? That's something we can kind of laugh at, but it, it does actually make a big difference. So I think that those are things that need to be also just part of, you know, the conversation.
Perfect, yeah.
Robert?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Emily, just a couple of points of consideration, just from my vantage point. One is the DPW director, and others mentioned, I think the earliest for effective success would be the annual town meeting of 2024, earliest, and the key is, is the public outreach and public understanding. One thing to also consider is that the town also has a rate review committee, that is a committee appointed by the Select Board that reviews and monitors the water, sewer, and transfer station rates. So perhaps the rate review committee could be built in, I know you want to put an advisory group together, but also perhaps the advisory group presenting to the rate review, or, or something along that line, in the public, in the public process. And then just lastly, just to add, last time that this was brought up, one of the major points of contention had to do with the commercial industrial owners that, unless their residents of AIR don't necessarily have a vote at town meeting, but one of the flashpoints was the issue of the impervious when you begin to calculate it in these large, larger entities. Not that the residential concerns are also very important, but I remember last time, the issue of the larger became a huge issue.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you. Follow-up question on, so the fee structure in the, the slide that you presented, so Newton has just $100 a year flat fee, that is just per property, just so I kind of understand the flat fee versus the tiered a little bit more.
For single-family residential.
For a single family. And how is commercial handled in Newton?
So if you look down at the bottom, it says large residential, commercial, industrial, tax exempt, so yeah, and they have accurate enough data that they're doing a per-square-foot calculation.
All right, thank you. That's all I have for questions, anything else, Janice?
I'm sorry, I'm just still kind of thinking, kind of out loud, like, you know, as far as like- like, you know, as far as like the, you know, potential fee structure, you know, how is it going to be broken up? Is it, you know, is it the, you know, lump sum? Is it, would it be on your utility bill, like an extra, you know, so much in a quarter? There was something else I just, I just think out loud sometimes. And, no, I lost it. Well, I'm also, with the bylaw, that's very important that that get a full public input before that, you know, goes forward. There was something else, but thank you.
Okay.
Just, you know, things come to your head and you just got to quickly get them out.
Any other questions? Robert?
One, Mr. Chair, just one other point. In, as you develop the advisory group in terms of stakeholders, you may want to consider a representative from the finance committee.
Okay. Good point, thank you, Robert. So I think that's, that's all we have for this subject matter.
Yeah.
All set?
Yep. All right, thanks a lot. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, Matt?
Evening, Matt.
Evening.
Hello.
Evening. So, next item is change order one for the Third Street Water and Drainage Improvements Project. This change order is for additional drainage piping and drainage structure replacement. So we were initially very conservative when we put this out for bid. We did not want to put out so much that we couldn't actually pay for it. So we had a very favorable bid. So we found some opportunity to actually replace the whole street drainage rather than just a part of it. So this change order is in the amount of $59,140.00. And I recommend approval of this change order and that amount, and including a time extension of 45 days. And that is for signature by the chair.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, what was the 45-day comment?
That is a time extension for the contract. So it's, the contractor initially had to substantially complete the contract, I believe by September 10th. So this would now, if this were to be approved, it would take it longer. So we're just trying to give them some leeway.
Okay.
Be the end of October.
Exactly.
Okay, but I don't, we don't need to put the 45 days in the motion? Because I didn't see it here.
It does include time extension.
You're right, it's not in the motion.
Oh, okay, including the time extension for signature. Okay, okay, I got it. All right. So, I have no questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions either.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the change order one for the Third Street Water and Drainage Improvement Project be approved in the amount of $59,140.00 and including the time extension for signature by the chair.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you.
Thanks, item three.
Bye, Matt.
Yep, Matt's gone for a minute.
Good evening.
Evening, Kimberly.
Forget my stuff.
Is this PowerPoint one?
No, this is not a presentation.
Is it part of, these were memos that were added to the packet?
Yeah.
It's the first one, just to keep in order. I'm sorry, can I see? It's the first one about water production update?
Yep, production, yep.
So, do you, I have a copy in front of me. Do you have a copy in the packet in front of you? There's a chart on there.
Yeah, we do, yes.
Okay. So basically, to summarize it, if you're able to see the chart, you'll see that the water throughout the month of May and June has remained high. We're no longer getting the breaks on the weekends like we were before. So there is some concern, the wells are just working extra hard. And so, the DPW staff, along with the town manager, met with our largest commercial user on June 7th to request that they modify their production. And since that meeting, they have, their consumption has gone down a little bit, but, which is great. And it's been consistently down. Just today, we met with the second largest commercial user and they are also aware of the situation and are going to do their best not to use any spikes in water use and try to modify things as well, as much as possible. But we feel that it's time that more conservation measures by the town and by the public are in order. So just to help modify these weekday and weekend water consumption. So I'd like to, we're making the recommendation that starting on July 1st, that all town irrigation systems be completely shut off. And that all the rest of the customers restrict irrigation use to odd even days on weekends only. So there would be no irrigation during the weekday, weekdays. And they would, so it'd only be Saturday and Sunday they can use their irrigation systems and it would be on the odd even day. So if your house address ends with an odd number, you would be allowed to water on that odd day. If it's an even number, you would be allowed to water on that even day.
And that's only on the weekends?
And that's only on the weekends.
So Monday through Friday, nothing?
Correct. But hand watering is still not restricted at all. So that's one update. The second update is on the Groop Pond Clearwell. So as you know, we have, are having production capacity issues and the solution that the engineering firms have proposed and suggested is adding this Clearwell and Finnish pumping stations. So we would like to move forward with that. So the first phase is, is doing the design and bidding. We'd like to get this going as soon as possible. So we're trying to get funding for this first phase as soon as possible. The potential schedule is that if we can get, if we can get funding for design and bidding done and we can get a design and bid done by the winter time, we can get on the schedule for construction. And we can foreseeably be in operation as soon as the winter of 2024, 2025. I think that's a very aggressive schedule and we need to keep pushing forward on this plan in order to even make that happen. Otherwise, we're looking at '25, '26. And so, what I have here is listed some potential funding sources. The first is the Army grant. And so, we've drafted, we're drafting a letter and hopefully that will get going soon. The second is the ARPA funds, which we hope we can utilize. Third is state revolving fund loan, which is a DEP through the Drinking Water Safe Revolving Fund. It's a low-interest loan. We used it to build the PFOS treatment plant at Spec Pond. The other two, I'm just getting started on, which is the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development, USDARD revolving funds. And that's for communities of 10,000 people or less. So that's a possibility. Also, the congressionally directed spending requests. So those are earmarks with our local federal representatives. So all of these have their pros and cons and I'm hoping that you would consider helping us move forward quickly. So those are my updates. Okay, thank you very much.
Follow-up, just a question. So you talked at the previous meeting about going back to the manufacturer to, or the designer of the system to see why we weren't getting the pressure that we were expecting. Is there any updates on that?
So there's, I don't think, we're still looking into that. That's one of the items we're following up along with the Army, which I know town council has the Army's letter we're drafting. So there's nothing new on that end, but it is another item we're looking at.
Okay. Any other questions or?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kimberly. So from a timing perspective, so from my view, I think this would be a good use of ARPA funds. It seems we need, we need the money sooner than later to at least get the project going because we missed the window for 2024, then we're delayed a year.
Absolutely.
Looking at that chart, it's a little unnerving.
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable voting ARPA funds tonight without Sean? Or do you want to put it on the July?
I think we need to take action tonight, yes.
I agree. Dennis, yes?
Matt's back.
Could I ask that before decisions are made, is this on, on the unallocated ARPA funds?
Correct, yes.
Could I ask that before decisions are made on that portion of the ARPA funds, that the fuller discussion about appropriate use of those ARPA funds from other town departments be had?
We are going to have a partial discussion on that later on tonight. It's not going to be for the full 2.1 million that we do have available for ARPA funds. So the 300,000 is a, is a small portion of the 2.1 million and is, in our view, it's to the initial intent of the ARPA funds, which was originally supposed to be for primarily water and sewer projects, though that has opened up where it is a little more wide open. So I do appreciate the feedback and we will have a further conversation later on. And we're not allocating all of the ARPA funds. Yes, sorry, Sarah?
I just wanted to just ask, are you guys going to vote on this, on the water suggestion that Mr. Peterson just mentioned saying that all, we're going to be going to just one day a week?
To the, the water restrictions? Yes, so do you?
Are you going tonight?
Yes.
I don't want, I want my water like more than one day a week. I just, I, I don't know why this town of people don't like pay attention to this a little bit more because all weekend long, I'm going to be the only one who's not using my water. Like, everybody's going to be using it. The only remedy is that the town's police department or the Department of DPW can go around and ticket people. It just seems like it's a little bit, just give us like a little bit more. That's it, I'm done.
All right, thank you, Sarah. All right, let's, I think we have two things on the table. So let's focus on the ARPA funds first, then let's revisit the, the water restriction.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could, just a correction on the balance. Current balance is 1.1 million.
1.1 million?
Yeah, because we've used a portion for the Westford Road and then for the Spec Pond.
Oh, that's right, Spec Pond, thank you.
So that's already been...
Thank you, Carly.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Just to clarify to Mr. Curran's point to, number five under my report has three, the three proposals. One, which is the 300,000 for the Clearwell, the Senior Center project, and the competitive grant program.
Thank you.
So do, I'm sorry, do we want to do the vote now on the water restrictions?
Let's do ARPA first and then we'll circle back on the water restriction.
So when are we going to do the ARPA? I'm now, I'm a little bit confused at the moment. Are we doing it right now? Or are we going to do it when Robert tosses in a little bit?
I was going to do it now.
Okay, okay, I just got a little bit confused.
It's been requested.
Okay, no, I just got a little confused, wanted to get back on the plate, okay. So we're talking about the 300,000 for...
For design and bidding.
Yeah, there it is. Yes, okay. Was there anything we needed to discuss more?
No, I was just going to ask if you want any more discussion. Any other discussions on the ARPA funds?
For the, for the Clearwell?
For the Clearwell, yes. Okay.
Okay. All right, so I will make a motion that the select board approve funding from ARPA for the Clearwell project for the PFOS design funding for up to $300,000.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, the 300,000.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so circling back to the water restriction. So, so in the future, can we all stay at the table until we're done? I think there's too many moving parts. So I want to reiterate, so the chart that's in the packet tonight shows the water usage and one of the interesting things that Kimberly has been pointing out is the weekend usage tends to dip significantly down. And now that we're in spring and summer, that's not dipping down. So we do have a capacity issue, not with the water source itself. It's getting it through our system. And that's what we're trying to mitigate as we're looking to make sure everyone does have water to use. So I want to clarify, so the request for a water restriction effective July 1st is all, no watering, no automated watering between Monday through Friday. And then, on the weekends, it's odd and even number days only. Please, correct me if I'm missing something.
That's correct, but also no watering during, from nine to five, even on the weekends.
Okay, so weekends only before 9:00 AM, after 5:00 PM. Okay.
So moved.
And if I may?
Yes.
I would just suggest that it's being declared a water supply conservation measure?
Significant water supply conservation, yeah.
All right. Sorry, Kimberly, can you come back up to the table, please?
Yes, sorry.
I feel like we need to vet this a little bit more.
Sorry about that. The motion's gotten a little premature.
All right, so water supply conservation?
Measure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a declaration of a state of water supply conservation.
And, does it have to be worded? I'm asking why does it have to be worded specifically for that?
Specifically, it's because that's how it's worded in the rules and regulations.
Okay, that's all, that's a perfect answer, thank you. Any questions or comments on this before we vote? So this would go into effect July 1st. What would be the public outreach on this before then?
We will do the email blast, we'll put it on the website, we'll do social media, is our...
Signboard, too.
Signboard, okay, signboard.
And then...
The phone call? Are they going to do the reverse call? They say that, I'm sorry.
I assume that was included in the blast.
It's not necessarily included, but we can include that.
I would, I think it's worth going every communication source we have. Dennis, question?
Is there an end date on the restriction? It begins July 1st, is there, is it known when it would end or not?
If I may?
Please.
So we're, we're continuing to monitor the operations and the tank, how full the tanks are and how well the treatment facilities are operating. So based on that is when we would, we would feel comfortable, you know, easing up those restrictions.
So, so the restrictions start July 1st with no end date until you arrive at a...
I don't have a date for you, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir, sorry.
So, the way I'm hearing it, if you hear it wrong, it's a conservation because the system can't handle the water usage? Or it's a, it's a conservation because we don't have the water?
The bottleneck? Yeah, I'm sorry if I may?
No, please, go ahead, yes.
The bottleneck is that the treatment facilities themselves and they just can't produce enough water for, to put into the distribution system. The wells have the water, the distribution system has the water, the bottleneck is the treatment plants themselves.
So, right, so it's not a conservation as much as a system, the system can't...
Well, we call it a conservation because it requires you to conserve your water. So that's why it's a conservation measure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I kind of agree because I agree that that's like in the rules and regulations, but I think it is a little confusing as far as, you know, the conservation because of the bottleneck. So, I mean, if it's possible to kind of rename it, I'm recommending it as far as, because otherwise people are going to get a little confused, like, well, why don't we have any water when we've had all this rain that's filling up the water tank, yada, 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 when it's just, we're having equipment issues, is...
Yeah, I see, I see the point around that.
Yeah, so...
But it sounds like per the regulations, this has to be the wording in order for us to utilize that, which, you know, if you look at it from a, you know, I guess, a conservation perspective, we have the wells... perspective, we have the wells and pumps running 24/7 without stop, trying to work the capacity through this bottleneck in the, in our process. And at some point, if that gives way, then we are in a major water crisis at that point.
I just think it's going to cause confusion, but to be honest, there's going to be some confusion.
I, I think there's going to be confusion anyway, so if this is the way, if the rules and regulations have to have it stated, I would prefer to do it that way.
Yep.
So, can we just clean this up a little bit?
Yes, please.
The motion? I think we're still trying to work on that.
I, I understood that the weekdays would not be affected, it was only the weekends. Then I thought I heard you say something different, so...
No, it is, the weekdays are impacted.
They are, okay, I misunderstood.
Pauline, you have a question?
Sorry, I couldn't get that on you. Actually, two. The first one has escaped my mind, but what enforcement elements are there to the, I hate to use the word violation, but to the use of water money through Friday, which happened strangely, we have 11 days to notify the entire town? No, 10 days, today's the 20th.
Is that right?
Yes, it's 10 days. Where we go? Enforcement, please?
Yeah, enforcement, so, you know, there's violations, so the Water Department, the Police, I think essentially any town official, it's noted in our, our water rules and regulations. There's a first violation, written warning, and then from there it steps up to monetary funds and potentially shutting water off. So we would start enforcement after, or starting on the July 1 date and make sure we get proper word up. The first offense would be a written warning and, you know, in practicality, we're going to make sure people are all on board and understand this is out there, so...
Okay.
The goal is compliance, the goal is not to just write tickets and...
Right, no, I understand that. And it's also important to point out that we are currently in a conservation measure for our water anyway, where there's not supposed to be any usage between 9:00 and 5:00 during the day, so this is kind of a...
Chair, the other question has come back, I'm sorry to say.
No, please.
We have the signboard on the Fire Department, I know people read it because I get asked, what does that mean? But I, we have the water ban signs in various locations, is that something that is possible for this as well, so that more people see them? Because we all know, nobody reads the town website.
It's not wrong.
To be fair, nobody, but to be fair, it's also on Facebook and some people won't go to the town's Facebook site because they're like, oh, is there a town Facebook site? And they won't click over there. And it can be put in the community page and they'll ignore it there, so, you know, it just...
All we can do is...
All we can do is put it out there, so... I'm working on the motion to clean it up.
Okay, Sarah?
I just want to say that I live here 52 weeks a year, like I was here Memorial Day weekends, so I just want to like, I just want you to, I really want, I'm saying this to you like very nicely, like when you read your charts, just remember like not everybody in this town is here and some of us really are here, like so much that we're like in this meeting, we're a lot, like, I, I really don't want you to restrict the water, I just really wanted this to share that.
No, I...
As a countermeasure.
Please, Kimberly.
If I may, like, we don't want to be in a position of restricting water, we want to be able to provide you with all the water that you could possibly want and need, this is not a position we want to be in ourselves.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if you go back a few meetings, we did have a very detailed discussion around what's causing this bottleneck and it's not something that's easily fixed in the short term, so we have to manage it as best we can.
And if it makes it any easier, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Makes it any easier, we are going to impose a full water ban on all town, so we're trying to be more, town, town, so we're being more restrictive on ourselves than we are on the average customer.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Through you, Kimberly, that was just a clarifying question. So on July 1st, before then, obviously all of the town irrigation systems, does that include the regional school district?
It's a very good question.
Because I know in the, in the past, we've had it, I, I think we should check...
It's a quasi-town entity.
School district, so, I mean, I would reach out to the superintendent.
Pauline, do you have another question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just really quickly, I've heard the word bottleneck several times, I've read all the documents everywhere on the agenda packet, what is the bottleneck or what is causing bottleneck?
PFAS.
So the bottleneck is being caused by the PFAS treatment itself at each of the treatment plants and particularly at Grove Pond. It was an unforeseen consequence of PFAS treatment and this is also why, this is also rela, so it's somewhat related to the other update that I had, which is on the Grove Pond Clearwell. This Clearwell project is going, it should be the thing that, that gets us the capacity back to pre-PFAS treatment levels. And I think what would be helpful is, is maybe putting that presentation up on the website as well, that we can, so I can do, ask, request to do that as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. How are we doing?
I might be on to something, okay?
Okay.
Probably still needs some tweaking, I'm trying to capture everything. Okay, so it would be a motion, okay, a motion that the following water conservation restrictions be made, only use irrigation systems on even odd days, weekends only, no watering between 9:00 and 5:00 on all days, and this is to ease the use of the water treatment facility to ensure no major issues in the future.
Does that work for you?
I mean, it's, it's got the meat, but it might still need a tweak, or, or we...
We're looking to see for your guidance on this one.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I would probably add in the town's irrigation system, so that's made clear.
Okay.
Okay, so I could put the... And include...
A total ban on the town irrigation system till further notice.
All right.
All right.
That's a biggie. Okay. I make a motion that the select board make the following water conservation restrictions be made, only use of residential irrigation on even odd days, weekends only, no watering between 9:00 and 5:00 on all days, total ban on town irrigation systems, and this is to ease the use of the water treatment facility to ensure no major issues in production for, in the future.
Good.
Sure, yes, thank you.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Last item.
Bringing something complicated next time.
Brief presentation, and Matt's going to take the charge here. So the Sandy Pond Road Complete Streets Improvements, so this was, is one of our complete streets prioritization projects, and I'll just let Matt get into the presentation and have some background in there, yeah.
Yeah, I think this is a bit of a lighter topic than water sewer and drainage improvements. This is a complete streets improvements proposal. So, complete street, it's a fairly newer term, so Mast dot, this is right from their website, complete streets want to provide safe and accessible options for all travel modes, walking, biking, transit vehicles, for all ages and disabilities, so it's really accommodating a road for everyone. And Mast dot is really pushing complete streets on towns like Air, cities, really everyone in the state, and they're actually, they actually, they launched a complete streets funding program 2016 to try to push those concepts on the town. So Town of Air, to get involved in that program, we had to submit a complete streets prioritization plan, which areas were ranked high, which areas were ranked not so high, but should be done. And the town first utilized funds in 2019, installation of sidewalks in School Street, and that was just over $200,000. So, and a key point that's not shown on this slide is, is values are eligible, it'd be four years for funding, so it's on every year cycle, so we're actually up for it once again the upcoming fiscal year. And now it's $500,000. And one of the streets does rank very highly on the prioritization plan was Sandy Pond Road, specifically Snake Hill Road to Westford Road. And just some facts, it's a 50-foot wide right of way, which is fairly wide street, so most right of ways are 40 feet, like a neighborhood, but this is a collector road, so it is fairly wide, which is fortunate. So this stretches just under a mile. The road itself is approximately 30 feet wide, so two travel lanes, both are about 13 feet, and there's a small shoulder on both sides. But the key point is that there's no complete streets components to it, there's no sidewalk, there's no curb, there's no bike lanes, there are ADA compliant crossings. So this is really typical kind of snapshot of the road, and this is just past Easy Street heading eastbound toward Westford Road. So you can see there's no curb, no bike lane, no sidewalk, that's generally what it looks like the whole stretch. And this is at Snake Hill Road, so you can see there's a crosswalk, there are crosswalk signage, it's not exactly, there's been a lot of talk about flashing beacons, so this would be a spot where we would consider it with a lot of potential pedestrian movement. And it is kind of a, a tough turn, not a lot of visual distance for drivers, so it's a very wide intersection, it's unusually wide intersection, so drivers don't really have to slow down, they can really run that turn pretty quickly, so that's Snake Hill Road. And the next couple of slides, these are all just intersecting streets, these are all newer subdivisions, so Easy Street, Patriot Way, and Mountain Laurel Road, they were all constructed, I believe, in the past 15 years, so wisely sidewalks were incorporated, but they don't connect to anything because there's nothing on Sandy Pond, so they're really just stubs. And there's no crosswalks in any of these intersecting streets. This last picture is at Westford Road and Willow Road, so it's, um, it's also a very wide intersection like Snake Hill Road, but for good reason with a lot of significant truck traffic making turns there, so, but once again, there's no complete streets components here. So Dan, you know, you can speak for all the requests from the public for installing sidewalks, making this more accessible street for the general public. So DPW received funding at town meeting for a study of Sandy Pond Road from Snake Hill Road to Westford Road. And the consulting engineer, we worked with Louis Fuss and O'Neil, so they looked at different alternatives and how much it may cost to incorporate those complete streets components, and really two concepts were studied, and they're very similar, but there's one major component that differs the two, so, next slide. The first concept is a shared use path. So the two concepts, concept A is a shared use path, and the next slide I'm going to get to is sidewalks and bike lanes, but for this option, 11-foot wide travel lanes and two-foot wide shoulders, a eight to 10-foot wide shared use path on the south side of the roadway, so this is kind of like, almost like a rail trail type of path that suits bicyclists and pedestrians in one way.
Yeah, I think like Shirley, they have the path when you head down off of West Main Street, very similar to there, yeah.
So that was the main component of this, and the main component's different than the next concept, but also including this would be a million overlay of the road, which is really stripping off the top inch of pavement and resurfacing that, as well as new pavement markings, a few drainage upgrades and granite curbing, which I'll get to that later, flashing beacons, the flashing crosswalk signage at Snake Hill Road and Mountain Laurel Road. And the preliminary estimate, and I'll get to this as well in the next couple of slides, is $1.8 million, so that's very expensive cost for complete streets components improvements. The concept B, as I alluded to, it's very similar to A, the main difference is that there would be instead of a shared use path, it's like the 10-feet, 10-foot wide, it's just a five-foot wide sidewalk on the south side of the road. And instead of bicyclists using the sidewalk, there would be marked bike lanes on both sides of the road. And the preliminary estimated cost for that was very similar, it's only roughly $100,000 less. So the conclusion of the study was concept B is preferred for a variety of reasons, for logistics, for constructability, and really for functionality. The cost can be significantly reduced through value engineering, which is simply taking out unnecessary components, things that maybe Town of Air doesn't need or doesn't want. And a key point was recommending phasing of construction, so going back to that total construction value being over a million dollars and the Town of Air not wanting to, wanting to, I should say, wanting to maximize use of funds for a project like this, that phasing would probably be the best way to go. So that shows the phasing, phase one is about a half mile from Snake Hill Road to Patriot Way, phase two is also about a half mile from Patriot Way to Westford Road. And that's just a closer snapshot of phase one. So phase one is, so Dan and I submitted a complete streets funding application, the maximum, as I alluded to earlier, was $500,000, so we submitted our application for the full dollar amount, and that would be for phase one work. And I looked at the consultant's study a bit more closely, and I think it could feasibly be done for close to $500,000. And Air DPW, we would provide the design, the permitting, and the construction oversight for the project if it were to be funded and go through. So the next few slides, these are really conceptual sketches, these are not finalized sketches, we're going to talk about public input, so we really want public input on a project like this, but, you know, Snake Hill Road, Easy Street, Patriot Way, that just shows generally what the final product could look like with the sidewalk being on the south side, some ADA compliant crossings, pavement markings. There's a lot of details that aren't shown on this, but this is really just for the general public to look at and understand what we're trying to do. And that's just a closer snapshot of what phase two would look like, that limited work. For phase two at this time, we're not focusing on the details of that just because of the cost, but phase two, like phase one, could be value engineered, close to $500,000, so it could potentially be a future Mast dot, complete streets project. And we're investing other funding alternatives at this time because we would hope to not have a, a huge gap if it were to, if this project were to go through the way we're proposing it, we would not want a large gap in between the projects just to keep public happy and not have loads of questions, so. So our next steps, I think a key one here is really to get the funding, hopefully, we're confident we're going to get it. But if we were to get the funding and follow through with this, it'd really be trying to get public input.
Yeah.
There's a lot of good opportunity for public input on a project like this, and also after that would be actual following through and designing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this was kind of, we wanted an initial update for the board as an initial meeting, and then I'd picture in the future, we'd have a public informational forum, an input forum, where we, you know, the DPW recommends phase one, and we can show all the reasons why the difference are phase one, phase two, and get input there and then move forward with the project, yeah. Yeah.
So now that the application's been submitted, what's the general timeline?
So this would be for the next fiscal year, if I'm correct. So we should, I'm hoping to hear fairly soon. So it was submitted, I think, two months ago now.
Yeah.
I can double check on the timeline, but I'd hope to hear fairly soon. That's when most of these grant applications get back to us typically.
Yeah. Yeah, usually it's three or four months, I think, with that program, that's what I remember from School Street. And this was the whole idea when we put this together, was to do the conceptual planning and then go for the complete streets grant.
So for Concept B, the preliminary estimate's 1.7. So is that including the grant, or is that without the grant? So with the grant, it would be 1.2 to the taxpayer, or is the 1.7 outside of the grant money?
So 1.7 would be everything. So if we were to follow through and it actually did cost 1.7 million, the project, if it were to get funded for two phases, it would be 100, 1 million funded and 700,000 paid by the town. But we're fairly confident that what was initially estimated, that wasn't by us, that was our consultant.
Yeah.
That was fairly overestimated. And there's a lot of pieces in there that could be eliminated to meet our needs and also our budget.
Yeah, and it's a conceptual design, so they're given a pretty conservative estimate, and they're factoring in engineering design, which in-house engineering, you know, will save 10% of the construction costs right there. So, you know, you're talking a good 100-plus K in savings just by us doing the engineering in-house.
Yeah. They looked at some of the most expensive options, like granite curving, and there's, it could be asphalt curving, for example, that would reduce the cost, so just as an example.
Yeah.
Because I guess my, like, looking at from a, I guess, a capital perspective, you know, if it's 1.7 total costs and we're eligible for $500,000 grant towards that, so 1.2 million, is it worth splitting into two phases at that point, especially, you know, if we're going to do the engineering in-house, so that's going to reduce the cost even further? And then you said that there's other areas. Is it worth trying to maybe, as you go through the public input, looking at it from, let's do the whole thing, as opposed to doing the phasing? Because, you know, waiting four years between Phase 1, or Phase A, or, you know, sorry, Phase 1, Phase 2, that's like a large gap. So, I mean, if you're going to kind of tear part of a street up, might as well try and incorporate the entire project, or at least see if that's feasible.
We agree on that. That was our biggest concern. There's so much opportunity for improvement, we didn't want to just do a small little piece.
Because the intersection with Westford Road absolutely needs to be addressed, and I think sooner than later. You know, and I think you'll find a lot of people in town probably feel the same way.
Just seeing some of the truck movements there.
Exactly.
Agreed.
Janice, questions, comments?
Uh, no, but the, just kind of bouncing off what you said about, you know, Phase 1 and Phase 2, we don't want to stretch it out too much because prices go up.
That's true.
You know, and then we think, you know, oh, we'll do Phase 2, you know, later, you know, this is how much it's going to cost, and next thing you know, we're like sitting here going, whoa, what happened? You know, so I would suggest that just get in there, get her done.
We agree. And one thing, we're looking at other funding alternatives, so there might be other ways to get more funds, like the Save Streets for All program, that's a fairly new one. So we're really, we would rather not phase it. It's really the most conservative way for us to at least start this process, but we're going to have to put in a lot of work to try to move it doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? That's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much. Up next is a request for abatement for water bill. Mr. Matthew Murphy, thank you for your patience. I know it's been a...
I've learned a lot about water today, and we'll keep the ball rolling.
Well, and now you fully understand the conservation issue, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's great.
You'll be able to, if somebody asks, you can say, I can answer your question.
Yeah. Let's talk about, so, over the last nine months, I saw a significant spike in my water bill. And kind of, you know, you see the water bill, you just put it to the side and pay it later, right? And then I kind of started looking at the numbers and noticed that it was a significant spike. So in the billing period, the first billing period, there was a spike, it was, over the 22 previous billing cycles, I was using an average of 1,063 cubic feet. And these three billing periods, the spike happened, it was a 900 extra cubic feet on top of that, 1,100 cubic feet in the second billing period, and then 1,300 cubic feet in the third billing period. And that's when I approached the DPW about this issue, because that's, we're not talking, we're talking serious change to my household. So a couple of things, when we finally addressed it, the DPW did send a worker down to change the meter and change the radio transmitter on the house, and then the next billing period, we went down to the normal usage. So it looks like we have two variables here. So the contention is the water was used or the equipment failed. And I can't prove either way, but I can see that there wasn't a leak in the house, which would be a significant leak. You mean, you wouldn't miss that much water coming into your house. Are you talking, I think it's between 80 and 100 gallons a day usage? So you would recognize that, and even if it was outside, you would see the erosion based on a leaky spigot. So if you look at, I think it's just, if you take those two variables and you say the usage went up, we haven't had, you know, any more people come to the house. I don't have kids come, I mean, I have two kids that, you know, aren't even toilet-trained, so they're not leaving the toilet running, so, you know. And it's not, you know, there's a lot of explanations, and when I talked to the DPW, that was the thing. But I think now that we looked at it, and those transmitter and the meter's been replaced, and we're back down into the area that the usage was over those 22 previous billing cycles, it kind of answers the question that there was some sort of issue with either the meter or the transmitter that caused that spike. Because I can't figure out, and even when the technician came to the house, we walked around the house, I said, I mean, if you could find a leak, and even when they put the new meter in with the leak indicator on, I checked it 30 days after to see if there was, the leak indicator was on, and it was not on. So there's no leak showing in the house now, and I didn't make any changes. Now, I had told the technician that I did have a leaky outside spigot, but as soon as I saw it, I called the plumber, had him come and change the spigot out, and change the shut-off valve in the house. So I'm not going to have water, just water and houses don't mix.
Right.
You know, and those problems don't go away by themselves. So what I'm asking for is, you know, and part of the bill has been paid, is a credit towards the water usage that hasn't been paid of the amount over the normal usage. So we're talking 900 cubic feet, 1,100 cubic feet, and 1,300 cubic feet over the previous two years' usage. So as an example, and so the period we're talking about is 2022, so from May to August is the billing period of 2022, was the first one in question. So in 2020, I used 900 cubic feet during that period, and in 2022, 2021, I used 1,100 cubic feet. So year over year, it's right in that neighborhood. That's, you know, that's, it's better than, and then if you go to May to August of 2022, it dropped to 2,200 cubic feet, so it doubled. So, you know, I think if we can come to an agreement with the overage based on the doubling, I think, you know, that's, that's the part that's in question in my mind, that I think the equipment is to blame rather than, you know, because I would, I mean, I'm pretty sure I wouldn't let it leave a toilet running for nine months. And I would definitely not miss a leak either inside my house or outside my house for that period of time, too.
You did have a spigot, an outdoor spigot was replaced.
Yes.
When was that replaced?
Uh, June, I noticed it on June 22nd, and I think the next day I had Hummingbird Plumbing come in and replace it.
In the 2023?
No, 2022.
22, okay, thank you.
Yep. So I was out there watering or whatever, and noticed it leaking, and I'm like, even when I shut it off, and I'm like, hmm. So I had them come in and replace.
So that falls into the first billing cycle that was elevated.
Right.
So that was fixed before then. All right, thank you.
And then you have the winter months in there, which I wouldn't have been doing outdoor watering, you know, so, and that's, you know, where we're at. It just, to me, and of course, you look at your water bill, and you don't really pay attention to it until you pay it, and then I'm like, wait a minute, something's not right here. So that's when I got down in the math. And I think, you know, if you look at the variables, is either it's a leak or it's the meter's an issue. Now that we have a new meter, a new transmitter, and it's back down to the normal usage, I think that shows that the variable was the equipment, not usage.
So we have, and the agenda ends in March, with 2,300 gallons of usage. You got a bill for June, correct?
I haven't gotten the bill for June, but I've, I checked it, I got the...
You've confirmed.
I got the money, I didn't get the usage.
Okay.
But it's, it's back down to, when I looked the meter, it's back down to what it was. So it's like 1,034 or something like that.
All right, thank you. Questions, Janice?
Just a couple, just for clarification. How many are in your household?
Two adults, two children, under six.
Okay, all right. And the leak on the spigot, I mean, was it like a slow drip?
It was a slow drip, but those slow drips add up.
Right, so, okay. I just wanted to kind of clarify. I think it could have been the equipment.
I agree. I mean, since the spigot was replaced during that first billing cycle, I feel it could have been the equipment now that we're back down to normal levels.
So, yeah, I have no, I have no problem. So trying to figure out how to word the...
Do we have a dollar amount that we're looking for?
I have it. This is kind of a shot in the dark, I wasn't sure it was going to be this easy, but we, I mean, I would have to do some back-of-the-room math. I don't have the dollar amount, but...
Well, we could, because I think we need a dollar amount...
Yeah.
...in order to provide an abatement. So we could put you on the agenda for July if you want to do some legwork in the next month. We can put you on the agenda, we'll try and do it earlier, put an agenda for you.
Perfect.
And we can have that final decision at that point.
Super.
Yeah, that way we have all the information and the motion and everything.
Yeah, and what I'll propose is anything that was above the average usage. So, you know, I mean, I use the water, right? I use that 1,100 typically.
Right.
So if, you know, it's the other 1,100 that's in question, so that's what I would be asking for the abatement for, is that amount.
Yeah, if you can get that to us like a week or two before the meeting, because, I mean, I, you know, we can do some numbers just to check, make sure it's a fair amount.
Okay, super.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
At least you learned some info tonight, though.
I've learned lots of education today.
See what happens when you pay attention to our meetings?
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is correspondence to Mass Development. This is about the Moore Airfield autocross events. So at our last meeting, we had received a response back from Mass Development to a letter that was sent about a month, month and a half earlier, which did not really provide any information or insight as to some of the questions in our initial response. So I put together an initial draft, which is in the, in the agenda. Carly does have a little more formal presentation one, but the wording is the same. So want to have a quick discussion and also get some public input on what we have here. So just for the gist of this correspondence that we want to send back, is we're looking for an in-person meeting with Mass Development to discuss autocross usage at Moore Airfield, and also make sure that they are monitoring the noise levels when those autocross events are in use, and also documenting them. I think for me, that's something that's very important because it does prove that they're doing something about it. The hours in which the groups are allowed to use the site for autocross, and then the frequency that it's rented out, so how, like, how many weekends during the summer, et cetera. So I don't know if there's anything that I missed, if there's anything that we want to reword, open it up for a discussion.
I thought it was well-worded, to be honest with you. So I really had no, I'm glad it, I'm glad Carly prettied it up, you know, putting it up, pretting it up, for those of you who don't understand, it's putting it on Town Letterhead. So I have no questions or concerns about it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience, questions, comments? No? Okay. So really, just to kind of reiterate what's in there, we're looking for something that works with both the businesses, but also with the residents that are impacted, to make sure, and also make sure we're holding Mass Development accountable for monitoring.
Also, just to kind of reiterate that we just would like a little bit of a seat at the table for some things, you know, so.
Okay.
Did you need a motion?
Do we need a formal motion to send?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion that the follow-up letter to Meg Delaurier, I pronounced the name wrong, Mass Development, Devens, as presented in the packet, be approved, signed by the board.
Second.
That was so painful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
One is painful as the other one.
Somehow that one had me more tongue-tied.
So that brings us on the agenda to the Town Manager's Report. I'll turn it over to you, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I realize that we are running behind, and I know that many will be disappointed and devastated if I don't give a detailed administrative update. So unless there's any questions on administrative matters from the board, I'd move right into the action items or when we get to the end, if there's anything.
No problem for me.
Okay. And you have the town warrants approved since the board last met in the packet. So item two is sort of the appointments, reappointments, part two. Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to the Assistant Town Manager to present those recommended for appointment or reappointment.
Thank you. So this list is much smaller than last time. We got a bulk of them done in the first meeting. So there is a small chart in the, in the packet. The Historical Commission is looking for a new appointment. You remember at the last meeting, Tom McLean, who's served for quite a while, is not seeking reappointment. So they have interviewed a candidate, and they're recommending that Mr. Chris Pataki be appointed effective July 1st of 2023 for a three-year term. That would be Mr. McLean's term that was not renewed. And then we just have some renewals on the Commission on Disabilities, Russell Anderson and Mindy Titus, and Recycling Committee would be Bonnie Tillitson. There's additional names that we've reached out multiple times, I haven't heard back, so we might have more reappointments or appointments, I guess they would be, after July 1, but we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No. I'll make a motion that the appointments and reappointments as laid out in the packet be approved.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item number three is the FY 2023 Year End Reserve Fund Transfers for various town departments. And as the board has in your packet, there are five town departments that are in need of a reserve fund transfer by the end of the fiscal year. of a reserve fund transfer by the end of the fiscal year to balance out their accounts. As I put in the memo, as of today, the balance in the FY 23 Reserve Fund is $300,000. There have been no reserve fund transfers to date. In the interest of, of time, Mr. Chairman, we also have each department is present to answer any questions that the Board may have on specific requests, and I have the original reserve fund transfers. The Finance Committee has also scheduled a meeting for, I believe it's next Thursday, to review and consider the RFTs that require approval. The departments, I don't know how you want to take them up, but individually?
Um, sure.
Okay.
Please.
So the first department is the Accounting Department. Carrie Cooper, the Town Accountant, is here, requesting $10,000 RFT. The present balance in the budget is negative $16,457. And the main reason, again, and for everybody's benefit, there are two criteria, one of two criteria on reserve funds, either unforeseen or extraordinary. And in this case, as it says, personnel change of accountant, as the Board is aware, there was a change made, personnel change. When that happened, it involved the Town Accountant Finance Manager. It is standard operating procedure to do a audit, and an audit was also needed due to some other matters, no issue of Ms. Cooper's, and that's what triggered the need for this RFT.
Correct.
So personnel change and an additional audit that was not originally budgeted?
Correct.
Any questions?
Aye, got questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions either, seems very straightforward.
Do you want to do the motions all at one, or you want to do it individually?
Separately.
Separately?
Separately, please.
Okay, all right. So I will make a motion that the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $10,000 for the, what?
Oops, sorry, there was a hand tied to it.
Oh, sorry.
Pauline, sorry about that. No question?
No worries, I didn't want to interrupt your train of thought. Just a question to clarify, Robert, if you don't mind, this $10,000 request has nothing to do with wages, correct?
No.
Co- correct.
Correct.
Correct. It's, it's for the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Pauline.
Okay. Okay, that's all right, I started to mess it up anyways. All right. I make a motion that the Board approve the reserve fund transfer for the Accounting Department in the amount of $10,000 due to unforeseen personnel change and required audit due to change.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the next department is the Assessing Department. I'd ask Ms. Linda McQuade, the Assessing Administrator, to come before the Board. This RFT is for the Assessing Department. The present balance in the budget is about $6,278. Actually, no, as of today, it's at negative $4,000. The driver, the request for this RFT, the total amount is $20,400. The Assessing Department, as the Board is aware, had a retirement of the longtime Assessing Administrator. He helped with the transition through part of this, so there was some personnel impacts to that, and I will turn it over to Linda if you want to just cover what constitutes the rest of the RFT, yeah.
We did just have some unexpected expenses for June that had come in. Most of them were increases from the prior year as far as some of the services for consulting that we had, but like I said, the majority of it was the Assessor Personnel Transition.
How long was the overlap on the transition?
It was till like October, yeah, beginning of October.
Four months, maybe?
Yeah.
Four months, maybe?
Four months.
Yeah, four months.
All right. And then on, on the consulting increases, how much approximately of those? Ballpark.
Yeah, $4,362.52.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any questions?
I have none.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Okay. I make a motion that the Select Board approve the reserve fund transfer for the Assessing Department in the amount of $20,400 due to the unforeseen personnel transition and unforeseen consultant services for transition.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, the next department is the Fire Department. The RFT amount requested is $20,000. The reasoning is, again, this, in this case, personnel impacts for unforeseen employee job injuries and extended sick time. Both, we do our best to prepare but can't predict when these things happen, and through you, the Fire Chief is before you.
Chief, welcome.
Sure, as you saw in your memo, it's never happened since I've been around the department in the 38 years, but we had two members out on sick time anywhere from three to five months, and then we had two additional members that were injured on duty, one was out since October, one since January. The good news on that is they're both expected back to full duty come July 1st. And an added note, we were able to save probably 30-plus thousand dollars come on December. The union agreed to have one of our call members that was available to fill in for that one injured member, so having them fill in saved us all that halftime, you know, and he will stay till July 1st when that member comes back, so that was a significant savings also.
Okay, so this is, so the impact really is the overtime costs rise and it's-
Correct, it's basically wages. I sat down with Ms. Cooper recently, went over it, noticed it might be just a little bit short to the end, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's all wages.
It's unfortunate, but it makes sense. Any questions?
I have none.
No, any questions?
I'll make-
Sorry, I don't have any other questions.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the reserve fund transfer for the Fire Department in the amount of $20,000 due to the unforeseen employee job injuries and extended sick time.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the next department is the Department of Information Technology. The IT Department is seeking a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $28,000. There are two unforeseen matters, which Ms. Knox is before the Board to answer any questions.
Yes.
As this Board will require, we, remember, we did have a power surge that affected the town's servers, which Cindy did give an update to the Board. That was an unforeseen impact. And we also were just informed recently, as we were going through the insurance renewal process, that for the town's cybersecurity insurance, there are new requirements, and the new requirement is, requires a two-point email security system that, with, that we need to get implemented by July 1st, and those are the other major costs. So I will, through you, Mr. Chair, Cindy's here to explain any questions, and I know that she put a detailed memo in the packet.
Right, one of the other things that we are actually doing is we, part of the cybersecurity requirements are to add additional cyber software to all of our endpoints, which is about 100 computers, and we're doing that now, which increases the cost per computer by about 250 a month. Interestingly, most of our email we've been, that we have, has been free, as it was provided by our internet host, Cherry Road. They do not offer two-factor authentication on their email, so we're moving people off to the Microsoft platform.
Okay.
Which means we're going to have to pay for every email address. With archiving, it's about 850 a month per user. And it is a rather extensive conversion that our tech support company, Drive Tech, is taking care of for us, and that's going to cost about $10,000. We have about 200 email addresses that we're converting.
Okay. Is this going to impact the next fiscal year? Just curiosity.
Uh, yes.
It will.
Yes, and we did build that into the FY 24 budget. Right at the last minute is when we heard about this in April.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Will our system, how we get our emails changed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll be contacting everybody about when their email will be updated-
Okay.
-and what the new email, email portal is, and you'll find that it's a lot nicer.
It's not DOS-based?
It's not DOS-based, it's Linux, no. No, it's a Microsoft email portal, which is pretty much like using Outlook.
Okay.
Excellent.
Here's a question.
Hi, Cindy?
Aye.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Cindy, real quick question. So we're going to have, let's call it MFA, right? So in other words, when we log in in the future, we're going to get, we have to get a code by text or something?
Yeah, either by a text or by an authenticator app.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, so then we'll be, yeah, I mean, that's an industry standard.
Yep.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Quick question.
Yes, please.
So does that mean I'd have to get a text every time I went to check my email?
Not every time, just within a certain period of time. I don't know what it is yet, but-
Okay.
It's a little thing, I like.
It's how it is now.
Oh, I know, passwords 500 characters long, so, all right.
I have no other questions, any other questions?
I have none.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the reserve fund transfer for the Department of Information Technology in the amount of $28,000 due to unforeseen mandatory cybersecurity requirements and unforeseen hardware failure, server power surge.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Way to hear.
Mr. Chair, madam, madam, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, excuse me. Last but not least, of the Treasurer-Tax Collector, Ms. Barbara Tierney, is seeking reserve fund transfer in the amount of $2,800 due to unforeseen price increases and unexpected need for multiple payment agreements as it pertains in the tax title, and she is before you to answer any questions.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So you can just, can you just kind of summarize, you know, in layman's terms, the reason?
Sure, so my tax title budget is a separate budget from the Treasurer and Tax Collector, and it's been level funded for years. So I did receive a notification of a hourly price increase for our tax title attorney, which of course happened well after this budget process, and I was hoping to make it through the end of the year, and then we just had kind of a larger abundance of payment agreement requests than I anticipated. I do have those vetted, so it had some additional billing that I did not anticipate coming.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Any other questions?
I have none.
I don't have any other questions, it was straightforward.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the reserve fund transfer for the Treasurer-Tax Collector Department in the amount of $2,800 due to unforeseen price increases and unexpected need for multiple payment agreements.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So members of the Board, that concludes all of the five RFTs, all of them total $81,200. They will be going to the Finance Committee for their review and approval next Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Yeah.
There's a FinCom meeting, and departments will be presenting there. Mr. Chair, the next item is the Regional Dispatch Intermunicipal Agreement, one-year extension, and through you, I'd ask the Police Chief if you could join us at the table.
Good evening, Chief.
You got all dressed up for us.
I know.
So as, as the Board is, is aware, there's an intermunicipal agreement that governs the Air Shirley Regional Dispatch Center, and is generally a three-year agreement. And well in, way into the budget process, way into the spring, it was all parties, myself included, all parties realized that the agreement actually expires on June 30th of this year. We thought we had another year left on the agreement. That posed a huge problem, not only for the Town of Air, but the Town of Shirley and State 911, as budgets were set and moving forward rapidly, and renegotiations had not commenced. So in, in consultation with the Town of Shirley and State 911, what we're proposing as a remedy to this solution is that both Air and Shirley agree to an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement for a one-year extension to June 30th of 2024, basically keeping everything in place, allowing for the appropriate due diligence and the appropriate negotiations regarding the funding issues, which I know this Board is concerned about, and we have discussed before. That will also enable the Regional Dispatch Center come July 1st, you know, to continue to operate with funding. So what was in your packet is a proposed amendment for a one-year extension, keeps everything in place in the agreement, except where highlighted in the, in the agreement, which is extends the term for one year to July 1, to June 30th of 2024. On the assessment issue, it keeps, it keeps everything extended for a year. In other words, Shirley's assessment for FY 24 for this last year would be $145,000, and the balance of the Shirley assessment would be assumed by the State 911 Grant Program, which has been confirmed, including the escalator for their costs as if the agreement went another year, so that's $81,200. And then the renegotiation of the agreement, in speaking with Shirley, the parties mutually agree that renegotiations for the successor agreement shall commence no later than six months prior to the expiration of this amendment, so starting in January, the negotiations need to be well underway. So that's, that's the proposal, is basically so that proper diligence and negotiations can commence.
All right, thank you. Chief, you want to add anything?
No, we pretty much covered it, an extension, and to just get us to the next step where we can negotiate the larger contract.
So can you just clarify, so this does cover additional wage, like, because our costs go up every year as a municipality, so this will cover those additional costs, passing some of that over to Shirley?
It will. As Mr. Pomprenz stated, that the, the state will be contributing an escalator to the, as the years we had. So we're hopefully that that, hopeful that that will cover that to get us through to the start negotiating the next one.
Thank you. Janice, questions, comments?
I'm just going to remind everyone that this is where the state came to us a few years ago. Am I correct to, to create this agreement with Shirley, because at the time they were having a problem? So that's how we got here, you know, so just wanted to remind everybody as to why the agreement came. So, but other than that, I have no questions.
Dennis?
And I, I think I raised these concerns earlier, a couple months back perhaps. Do we know, have we determined what the real costs are to each of the towns and to what extent those costs have been equitably shared between municipalities?
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Curran's question, let's take FY 24, the year ahead. So the cost to run the entire Regional Dispatch Center is, would be $876,818. And then we receive a grant from State 911, we, the center, then, and that grant comes right to the town and the chief for $328,802. So that leaves the, the operating budget after the grant for both, for the center is $548,016, right? Now, in a normal world, which I'm still looking for, that we live in, in a normal world for FY 24, Air would pay- Air would pay $274,000, Shirley would pay $274,000. The rub, not to get into all of it, and the board is aware this many is leading back, is Shirley's ability to pay, if you will. So what then happens is, Air, we're paying $321,000, the Town of Air, to run that portion of it. Shirley is, would be the $226,000, but that $226,000, they're only paying $145,000. So the, the challenge of the issue in the renegotiations will be Shirley paying, paying more of their fair share, which is being offset by the state grant.
And is there any, given to Janice's point that the state evidently initiated the desire to create this entity in order to, for some purpose, is there any ability for the Town of Air to recoup over the last five years, something on the order of, I don't know, whatever it is, $120,000, $500,000, $600,000 from the Town of Shirley and/or from the state for the inequitable burden that the taxpayers in Air have borne due to the failure of the Town of Shirley to pay their fair share?
Through the Chair, that, if you will, is one of the central pieces of, of the year ahead, and is, State 911 is aware of that, Shirley is aware of that. So not to be trite when I say more to come, the, the fundamental issue is the amount paid.
Okay. And could I ask that, well, prior to, it, it just seems that extending an agreement, which in its essence has already been determined to be inequitable, shall we say, for another year poses challenges, I think. That is, we are, and we are perpetuating what has been going on for evidently...
We, we are. If you don't mind, I'm going to stop here. We, we are. However, you have to look at a couple of different factors with the situation that we're in. One is the timeline through, to get to June 30th, which is only 10 days. So the ability to put together a new agreement in, in 10 days is impossible. To get an agreement, get it through both boards, both Select Boards, and get it signed off. And the other thing which I do want to point out is that the state requires us to be in a regional 911 system, which by having it hosted with Shirley as our partner, though there are many nuances around that, and we all know that, it does allow us to keep our own 911 system in our community.
Okay, so just a couple of things, and I know the meeting has gone well past its normal time. Could I ask that prior to the new agreement being signed or approved, that the Town Manager and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen from the Town of Shirley appear before this body in a public meeting to explain the steps they are going to take or have taken?
It's kind of out of our jurisdiction to do that, you know, and I understand your point. You know, it was the same conversation when the schools regionalized, and, you know, I, I totally understand your frustration, and then everyone at this table understands your frustration.
But we can, can't we ask? I mean, that is, I know that we can't compel them to be here. But I would think that if they want the Town of Air, or have a history of relying on our tax dollars to pay for some portion of their service, that they should have the, you know, just kind of, it just seems natural that they would appear before the board and tell us why.
Janice?
So just to kind of give a little background as to how we got here. We all know that some years back Shirley had some severe financial things happen to them. It wasn't the residents saying, "No, we don't want something." It was some mismanagement that, a lot of headlines and everything like that. I understand what Mr. Curran's saying, but here's the other problem. You know, by being regionalized, if we weren't regionalized, and Shirley did not have a 911 system, if I, an Air resident, went to the Bull Run, which is in Shirley, and something happened, how do you call 911? So, so I, as a resident, can be in Shirley and have 911 called and get the service. So I'm, I'm, I'm in there and I'm paying for it, okay? So I think that, I think that unfortunately we're getting a little bogged down with some of this. And again, the state came to us because I understand and I get it. We're, we're paying this too. We're, we're residents, we're taxpayers of this too. We're also paying this. But at the same time, we also have, you know, friends and family members that happen to live in Shirley, and we can't be like, "No, because you're not paying your share." Because I guarantee you that if we were to have that mentality, if something happened in this town, which, you know, I'll find some wood, knock on wood, and it has not, we would not want any of our neighboring towns to not assist us.
Very true. Kurt, you have a question?
Yeah, just a general thought. Since the, the agreement we're in is a state mandated thing, correct?
Being in a regional 911 system is state mandated.
Right. So if we aren't being compensated correctly, maybe the state? We could approach the state and see if they would make up the difference. Just, just something for thought, that's all.
Yeah, the state does make up some of the difference, but to Robert's point, when he was running through the numbers, it's not all of the difference.
Yeah, okay. But maybe, you know, maybe you can't just, something to be aware of if we...
And I think when we get to the next agreement, I think this definitely warrants a more robust conversation at that point in time, because that'll be the point in which we can change, make major changes, hopefully major changes to the agreement, and bring things a little more correct for Air.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if I could just add a couple into the audience. I think it's also important not to forget where Air was prior to being in the regional agreement, what our dispatch center cost the Town of Air, and then absorbing that. So one of the things that we'd be going to try and highlight is kind of the progression from where we were and what we paid as a town, and what Shirley paid as a town. And then as we merged in understanding more of what the, how the costs should be split up, I think we'll, I, I think we'll, we'll shed some light on to, you know, kind of where we're at now, and why we're, you know, why we're talking about trying to, to kind of reconfigure the, the share, so to speak. And the other thing too, that the Town of Air has actually benefited, in, in the other, in the other towns, by, by being in this regional, it's opened up a, a whole lot of other monies that the Town of Air has benefited from. We've, we've outfitted the, and completely redesigned the dispatch center without any cost to the taxpayer. All of our radios have been updated, in the cruisers and the portables, in, in both towns really, but at no cost to the taxpayer. So the, the grant monies that we're talking, here is, is one pool, but it alloc, it opened up another bucket where, you know, we've probably, I'm just going to ballpark it, but have probably utilized somewhere between $750,000 and a million dollars worth of grant money, just in equipment that the Town of Air would have had to pay, and that we didn't, because the, that, that pool of money was open to us. So being in a regional is, is very beneficial to the towns involved, because it opens that, other, other monies up.
Thank you, Chief. Dennis, one more, then I'd like to move on.
Yes, so as the negotiations proceed, a couple of things I would, I think it would be helpful for the board and for the Town Manager to keep in mind. One is that the Town, the Town of Shirley has agents. They can make whatever decisions regarding their tax rate, their Chief of Police, their Fire Chief, their, their citizen read. They have the ability to shape how they spend their money, where it's allocated, what they consider important, what they don't consider important. We not ought to deny that to them. They have the ability to make their decisions based on what their community thinks is important. We, we need not deny that to them.
Right.
And, yeah, so I'll, I'll leave it there, but I look forward to hearing about the, you know, the negotiations or how that process will proceed.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions? No? Okay. I'll make a motion that we extend the intermunicipal agreement as presented in the packet to term ending June 30th, 2024.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Item 5, ARPA funding requests and proposals. And as mentioned earlier, the town, up until tonight, had a, has a balance of just over 1.1 million in remaining ARPA funds. And additionally, at the June 6th meeting, when we discussed ARPA, the Select Board had asked about setting aside a portion of ARPA funds for the purpose of a competitive intertown department grant program in which smaller town departments could submit smaller eligible projects for consideration. And then looking at it, what I put in, in the packet for consideration were, were three areas, and if approved straight out, would still leave a remaining balance of $660,687 in ARPA funding. The first one, the board has already addressed, which was the Clearwell Project for PFAS design funding, up to $300,000, which, which has been approved this evening. The other two areas I proposed, now originally we had discussed on the Senior Center Community Center project, up to $300,000. This has been revised to up to $150,000 to get the project, or the site recommendation of the project from this point to Town Meeting. As mentioned, the Building Committee has been formed by the board. They had their first meeting last week. They do not have any funding at this point, or any significant funding. And in order for Town Meeting to weigh in and make an informed decision, there needs to be some due diligence and some design work done on this, on this project. And that is a number that we have been, that has been struggled with to get, get to that point. I want to make it crystal clear that if Town Meeting, you know, green lights, you know, the, the project moving forward, as this board knows and everyone knows, there will be, you know, additional funding necessary, both in terms of design and construction. A multimillion dollar project in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as a general rule, the total design budget is usually about 10% of, of the overall, overall project. So again, the up to $300,000 to get it to the fall Town Meeting, I, I know that there were some concerns on that. I put, you know, up to $150,000. I mean, the board can discuss that further. And then the last piece, for the intertown department competitive project grant program, recommending up to $150,000 for that program. I will, for your July meeting, have a proposal for consideration on that program. I mean, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, as some other towns have done that, so we'll get a proposal together, and then departments would, you know, apply for that funding, subject to approval by the Select Board in a public meeting. So that is sort of the, the ARPA piece for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Comment? I'm just glad to see that the, the number for the Senior Center has gone down. Other than that, I have, I have no, I have no questions or issues. So we're saying, well, actually, so we're saying up to, okay? But there's always the chance that only $100,000 will get used, and then $50,000 will go back into the pot, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah, correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that, okay. So, yeah, I have no issues.
Okay. Excellent. Dennis, question?
Yes.
Comment?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm here with some of the members of the Council on Aging and Board of Directors.
Yeah.
And as the board is aware, we have, since 2018, this last permutation has been seeking funding for a new senior center. So this project has been five years in the run, on this go-round. After the Site Selection Committee has finished its work, the Building Committee has been formed, and we are now attempting to move forward with the design, the preliminary design of buildings. As, as Robert mentioned, design work on municipal buildings, just the ballpark figure is something in the order of 10% of, you know, the estimated long-term construction cost. $150,000, well, let me say this. To date, it's my understanding that the seniors have not received any of the ARPA funding. And through no fault, the requests haven't been made evidently, but ARPA funding has been dedicated to, by and large, infrastructure within the town, which is all well and good.
Which I believe is the purpose of, was the original purpose of the ARPA.
It was to kind of help, I think, those who bore the brunt of, suffered the most from, had the most deleterious effects of the COVID pandemic, to help them recover and to help the American economy move forward. I think it is beyond dispute that the seniors are the ones who are most ill-equipped by the pandemic, by any reasonable measure. Decline in socialization, the entire closing of the center, adverse health effects. And so what I would respectfully request is that, I was going to suggest that $500,000 of the remaining $800,000 be devoted to preliminary design and light engineering for the purposes of the senior center. Seniors comprise something on the order of 25 to 30% of the population of this town.
No, and I, and I agree with you. So if I can, if I may, ask a couple of questions. How many meetings has the Building Committee had since its inception?
One. It was just, it was just, as you know, it was just formulated that the first meeting was held.
And I'm trying, because, so I'll, I'll kind of lay my fear, my fears is, if we were to allocate a significant amount of money to the Building Committee, at some point, that decision, whether it's, you know, the design of the, the facility or even the location of the facility, as we saw with like West Main Street, has to go to Town Meeting. And I would hate to allocate a large amount of funds for something that then is going, possibly be defeated at Town Meeting. When is the Committee's next meeting?
Building, I believe it's July 12th.
July 12th, yeah.
Would it be feasible for a discussion of your committee at the next meeting to kind of figure out how you can bridge the gap, say, to this fall Town Meeting? Maybe not for like a full design of the building, but perhaps like conceptual renderings, just to kind of gauge public opinion on, like, whether this entire, a project and its entire cost will actually go through the entire process?
And again, I, I don't know how to properly estimate, you know, that level of design cost, what the cost of that would be. It was my understanding that what we would be initially looking for is schematic design and what's called light engineering in order to get some sense of what the ultimate, and I guess a cost estimate on construction, so that we would have a clear understanding that when we went to Town Meeting, we would be able to tell them something with some level of accuracy about what the building would cost, given this is what it's going to look like. Because from our perspective, I, I think it's important for the board to kind of think about this as, not only is it... is it an investment in the infrastructure in the town, which it certainly is, but it is also, more fundamentally, I think, an investment in the town's people.
I totally agree with you.
This building invests in the town's people. It allows them to increase, literally, increase the longevity of their lives, improve their daily health, increase their socialization, allow them to live in their homes for longer because the community supports them by providing socialization, recreational opportunities, meals, and all the rest of it. So I don't think you can just look at it as an infrastructure project, you know, as commonly understood, but rather as an investment in the people who live here.
No, I totally agree with you on that. It's similar when we look at like building a school. You know, it's, it's investing in a certain segment of the population. Sorry, Janice?
So, he's, he's speaking, he mentioned the Council of Aging, okay? And then we have the building committee, okay? So the building committee would need to come forward and say, hey, this is what we need. Now, if there's something that the COA needs that we can, you know, use some ARPA funds for the immediate use of the Council of Aging, then that we could say, and I'll just throw out a number for conversation, let's use 150,000 of the ARPA for the current Council of Aging to get them moving forward while we're also creating this design. Okay? So, but the thing with the, the design, as far as for the senior center project for 150,000, which I agree, you know, the big design, but again, there is the concern that what if it got, we need a functional design. In layman's terms, a good PowerPoint presentation that shows a good design that the town can wrap their head around and say, yes, that's what we want, and then be able to move forward with more funds. So there, I think that there is a legitimate concern about throwing too much right now. But I think that if the Council of Aging needs something right now, we should definitely look into it.
Okay. Katie, I see your hand up online.
Yes, thank you. I was just gonna say, the, one of the main reasons that the request is at the dollar value that it is, is because of the unique nature of that site and need to work around wetlands and other constraints of that site. And so, the, the amount of information that would be needed in order to take, like we requested something reasonable to town meeting to really help people understand what we would be designing there and what the impact would be on the site and its surrounding areas, I think, requires a little bit more than the PowerPoint and the sort of conceptual design. It does need to include some light engineering.
Okay. Is there a preliminary timeline for like funding? Like at what point do we think we're going to go to the public? I'm looking to bridge to that, I guess. I mean, that's, you know, make sure that you have what you need to get the work done, but also without overextending a commitment. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I think that the assistant town manager, I'll give her full credit, we were talking about this recently, said it best. We have a chicken and an egg problem with this project from the beginning. I don't want to say problem, that implies negative, but it's a unique challenge. And we've talked about this since 2018, 2020, is that we have a project, more or less, but we don't have a site. And not to read all the history, rehash all of the history, but through a whole bunch of due diligence, public and so forth, and I know there's, the recommendation, this site recommendation that this, you know, board approved is, all things being equal, we don't have a two acre, acre and a half to two acre municipal site. That would be great if we did. If we had a piece of land, perfect, or a building, we don't. All things being said, both the COA and the Parks Commission sort of came together with this idea for this opportunity to the town. We understand it's a big decision. Both the COA does, the building commission does, the Parks Commission does. We understand it's a big decision. We understand there's some risk and there's some funding needed. I think what would serve the town best between now and the fall town meeting, what we're looking for is town meeting, once for all, needs to weigh in on this, this site down here, the people. Do, do we want it or not? Now, everybody is already forming opinions either way without all of the information, hence the funding. The, the design, the light engineering, the due diligence. If that is done in October, you know, for October town meeting, and the green light is given then, that still doesn't take away, as this board well knows, as other processes, capital, funding, and so forth. But there, that, that is, that is the risk with us, the challenge that we face. We understand we're, we're looking to use, we're asking to use a certain amount, a considerable amount of public funds, but to have a meaningful, to have the information in all of the questions. So that's why, you know, I, looking at it, from what I was hearing, you know, reduced it down to up to 150,000. Now, as you had mentioned, the committee, I believe, is next meeting is July 12th, and this board's meeting is July 18th. But, uh, one other, yeah, so I, I mean, that, that's, that's the, the risk. And the question is, how much, how much is needed to get to that point in October?
Okay. Dennis?
I'm sorry. You know, somewhat to Janice's earliest point, and I appreciate the generosity about wanting to fund the Council on Aging and inter-ARPA funds that can be used for that outside purposes of the building, that you would be open to doing that. The difficulty is that, and as I'm sure you're aware, the space constraints where it is currently housed do not, that is, and I know that Katie, her budget requests have been met favorably by Robert, and, and, and that's all, all great. But she is constrained with how much she can ask for, given the physical constraints of her environment. I mean, she could waste, you know, make kind of frivolous.
So.
So my.
I want to stress, we're not against the senior center, like a new senior center.
There's going to be senior center.
What, but I guess the point I'm, the point I'm trying to stress is that since 2018, so for five years, this is not a recent thing by any stretch. For five years, we have been struggling to get a new building. Everybody has understood. Now, even if this moves kind of in an expedited fashion, we won't see that building for another four, under optimistic scenario, for another four years. So it will be 2028, 20, you know, maybe 2030 before anybody walks into a new senior center anywhere in the town of Air. In order to move that process forward, the town, I think, needs to move the process, that is, it has to kind of willfully decide that we are going to move the process forward in, in something of a kind of open-minded, generous-spirited effort in order to get it built. And getting the ARPA funds allocated so that that design work can proceed in an aggressive fashion, that is, having a, is, is going to be necessary. I don't think that there's a way around that. That is, you're gonna, in order to get it built, you have to get it designed. In order to get it designed, you're gonna have to spend money, and you're gonna have to do it soon.
So my request, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, so he, he's correct, but let's remember, too, you can throw all the money you want at the, to the consultant and say, design this. It won't necessarily move fast. Because, and, and, and there's been a history of that. We, we've had that problem, you know? But the other problem is, is that, again, you know, and you know, is that if we use up those ARPA funds and then town meeting says, no, dead stop, money's gone.
Correct.
So the public, the public meetings have to happen.
Correct. So, I, I think, so you have, there is support on this board for some funding to go to the, the project. At the next meeting for the building committee, can you, if you could come with a more definitive number of what that would look like? And kind of a, I guess, for me and Janice, feel free to add anything, if I'm missing anything, almost like a roadmap of how that would get us through to October town meeting? And if there's ways that we can do even like incremental funding, like if we do a small portion at the July meeting and then, you know, maybe come back in a couple of months? Just so as the process is moving along, we're not overextending. Anything else?
Well, you know, you just pointed out again that fall town meeting is in October, okay? So even if we said, okay, here is, you know, all the money you want in the world tonight, you still gotta hire the consultant.
Understood.
So, you know, there, there's, and I really want to be wrong, but I, I have to temper this a little bit. There's, there's the chance we won't make fall town meeting.
We can set it as a goal.
Absolutely. Because whoever the consultant is, has to be told, you, you hit the ground running.
Katie, you have your hand up?
So, yes, thank you. So my understanding was, we can't go out for an RFP to get that consultant to give the full range of work and the cost estimate until the select board or another form of, via ARPA, or another form of funding? So it, I, I guess I'm just not really sure how to proceed then, because.
But how do we quantify?
We do know that design work will cost more than 150,000, will cost more than 300,000. So how do we go out to, to bid to get this work done that you're, I mean, very reasonably requesting that we offer if we can't go request it without the funding already in place?
So, Mr. Chair, my recommendation on that, again, we're back in the chicken and egg scenario, is that, you know, we work, DPW, Dan's been helping out a lot, Matt, on this project because they have the engineering expertise. We can certainly reach out to different consultants and say, we need this to get to the next step. What, what is your estimate based on that? That way, that can fine tune the funding. The less we spend in ARPA funding, it's just bumping the cost more. Because basically, what we're looking for is a conceptual, you know, we've heard from residents, we don't want to drive down School Street and see a big monolithic structure. We don't either. That's not our intent. But through a public process, we could, could we, you know, maybe have an engineer, engineer look? Can we design it differently than our basic, basic concept that we have? We just knew we needed a certain amount of square feet on somewhere we could build. We've got that. We need to refine that Katie's put in what she's needed for the programming. We, you know, obviously Jeff has put in, we saw that as an opportunity for two departments to work together to get one, you know, this has been a longstanding goal of the Parks Department as well. So based on public input, after getting this initial, let's call it seed funding, can we rework? Can we move the building to the right? Can we move it to the left? There's a hundred-year flood plain down there. There's wetland concerns. In, you know, there's, in absence of another buildable site, we have to work with what we have right now. And I foresee us, you know, this funding getting us to that basic, here's what it's going to look like, here's a square footage. We're still going to need additional funding for detailed engineering, as far as, this is where this electric outlet's going, all the detail. So we're still, I want to say, several steps out, but we just, we can't start if we don't have any funding to get us to a point where we can have an effective town meeting. So residents have all the information that they need. So I would, again, to answer Katie's question, is, I will work with Matt and, and Dan to, to get that number fine, you know, sharpen the pencil as much as we can.
That would definitely help because, you know, that would at least give us a number that we're looking at for funding request. Janice?
When do we hope to have the RFP actually get submitted?
We don't have any funding.
Yeah, to be determined.
If we had funding right this second, when would the RFP be submitted?
It would be put out probably within 45 days, at the most. I would say, right, Dan?
So it'd take 45 days to, to write and post the request for proposal?
Yep.
Right, because then, as you know, there's that statutory period that it has to be out there for responses.
But it wouldn't even get out there until 45 days? Is that what you just said? Or it would be out there for 45 days?
No, I would say by.
When would it be typed?
Yeah.
And then posted, so that I, the contractor, could say, ooh, let me read this RFP and see if I want to bid?
Well, if Matt and I put something together quick, you know, it has to go through, what's the bulletin? The designer bulletin? And we probably will give them three or four weeks to respond. So I might say five or, five or six weeks from right now, but.
So five or six weeks from right now, you have it typed and posted?
Or that's when you get your responses to proposals.
Okay, but I, I'm asking, what I'm asking is, you, you, we've given you the money, we've given you all the money in the world. You're gonna go home, you're gonna start typing up that RFP. When is that RFP now ready, printed, posted, so that I, the contractor, can read it and say, ooh, I think I'll bid for this? That's what I'm asking.
Two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how long does the RFP stay out?
I would give them three or four weeks.
So I'd say four weeks, that's 30, that's six weeks total. So even from today, that's looking at, end of June, mid-Ju, mid-August.
And, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, we got a couple of hands up. Pauline first, and then Dan and Carly.
Thank you, Scott. I'll be really quick. I was asked, the building committee initial meeting, and I haven't heard anyone tonight talk about the Article 97 procedure, which could stop this whole thing in its stead. So I think we're putting the cart before the horse by allocating money for something that might not even be allowed by the state legislature. Just cautionary, I'm not asking you to change mind. I just want you to be fully informed. And I think that's not happening with all due respect.
Mr. Chair? I need two minutes.
All right. We are going to take a recess on the select board of two minutes. So our select board is returning from recess. We are back in open session. So we had Pauline commented on the Article 97. Robert, you said you wanted to do a quick response to that?
Yes, because it was characterized, A, that people aren't being informed. As the, I know both of you are aware of the Article 97 process. I know it was on the agenda at the Public Building Committee meeting last week, which I, I was not at, but I've been briefed on. Part of this funding, to be clear, when I, and I've said it all along, is the design, the due diligence, and so forth. There, we are gathering the information on the Article 97. If the, if there is an Article 97 process, and there's variations to that, and we've, we've said this publicly before, that the Article 97 process also requires authorization by town meeting. So I just, I just want to be clear as there seems to be this continuing, So I just, I just wanna be clear, as there seems to be this continuing, in my opinion, erroneous theme of that there's some kind of cloak and dagger, there's not. And I appreciate that opportunity to clarify that.
All right, thank you. Janice?
I, I appreciate the board kind of looking in detail at this. What I, and this is my first go-around with a project of anywhere near the size, what I, what I've cut, we will never, never get to preemptive unanimous consent on any proposal. The site of the building, the size of the building, the programs in the building, we will never preemptively get to a unanimity in the town. There will always be compromises that are necessary, there will always be voices who are objecting all along in the process about what they feel is inappropriate or inadequate or wrong. We cannot allow any project to come to a screeching halt simply because we fear having to work through those difficulties.
Well, I don't think we have any fear.
No, it's, it's not a fear of working through the difficulties, it's, so with where we are right now in this process, I, I think that there is support for providing ARPA funds, but we're looking, I think, for a more definitive number to, to understand, you know, if it's looking at designs to put an RFP out, if it's, you know, working, you know, if something specific, like, I guess, more quantitative in the number that you're looking for, and, and a plan as to how that's gonna proceed forward. You know, and as I said before, you know, I mean, the funding is needed throughout the project in one way, shape, or form, so, you know, at the next building meeting, I would request that you do spend some time having the conversation about what your next steps are and what you need to get to that next step. Um, and then come back, we can agenda this for the July 18th meeting, and we can have a, a, a discussion around it then. Hopefully Sean will be aboard of three, hopefully Sean will be back, and we can take actions then, and then that can start the process for you. Go ahead. And then Pauline.
So were we, so, I just wanna make sure I follow in everything that's going on. So we could approve, I think, the up to 150,000 tonight, so that maybe they can start typing, okay? And then if the Building Commission comes back, Committee comes back in July, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm asking questions.
Okay.
And then come back and say, "Okay, we found out that we need like 75,000 more on top of the 150." We could then approve and more?
My understanding is.
Or are we just gonna wait until the July 18th?
I'd rather, I'd like to wait till the July 18th, so that some due diligence can be done.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to follow along, okay?
Yeah, and we can have a conversation at that time.
Okay.
Pauline?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, Robert, Janice, I didn't mean any untoward suggestion about cloak and dagger, but Article 97, I've not heard you discuss it, and that's fine. I want to give kudos to Carly, however, because that's when I first learned about it, and she did a masterful explanation at the Building Committee meeting, what is entailed. And it's not a simple process. And I just think that needs to be part of your regular discussion about money, because if Article 97 is gonna fine us, or cause us not to be able to do anything, that needs to be upfront and center before we start allocating money, even if it's ARPA, not taxpayer money, just suggesting is all. Let's make this a transparent process for everybody, because there are so many who don't understand it, and that's all I was suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. Dan, yes, sorry.
I'll be quick. I question whether we even need to do an RFP, just because we're trying to, the scope of the work is to get from now to town meeting, some kind of conceptual plan, and at this term, there's really nothing, it's such a sketch. So vetting some of the soil, you know, the environmental, et cetera, et cetera, survey, um, you know, once the full scope of the project, that's when you trigger the designer selection law, and you need to do an RFP. I mean, it's good practice to do one, but, you know, like, we've worked with advocates throughout the work process, for example. So, I couldn't look at that when we're, when we're pulling in more of the scope, I started looking at some scope for this project, so I'll work with Matt and we'll get together.
Okay, yeah, that would be appreciated for the 18th. All right, um, any other questions or comments? No? Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to conclude on the ARPA piece, just in the interest of time, as the board will require, recall, at the June 6th meeting, the DPW Director also proposed a potential project for the Sandy Pond Sewer. It was in the packet on June 6th, it was an oversight, not on here, but in the interest of, of time, we can revisit that at, at the next meeting. Lastly, the update on the opioid settlement allocation, unfortunately, we don't have the information yet from the Attorney General's office. I've followed up again, which they are actively working on. What I would propose, Mr. Chair, for the board's consideration in the interest of time, is if we don't receive anything by the July 18th meeting, and as I have said on record numerous times, as soon as I receive that information, I will transmit it to the board, and it is public, if by July 18th we haven't received anything, I think we should put it, have it on the agenda to discuss sort of next formal steps.
Going to their door?
Maybe going to the door, but that way, we will, I still have to believe that the individual I have been in contact with, they are working in good faith, but by July 18th, we need that information in order to make an informed decision on terms of next steps.
I agree with you. Janice?
Just, just to make you aware, I reached out to Representatives Senna and Senator Eldridge twice, have not heard back, other than auto-generated email from Senator Eldridge's office, so.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Sorry. That concludes your report.
Mr. Chair, Selectman Livingston, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, up next is New Business Select Board Member Questions, and we have one this evening for Select Person Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, last week, I, on the 14th, I received an email from the Harvard Select Board Chair, Rich Maori, to discuss having the Air, Harvard, and Shirley Chairs, which I informed him that you are now the chair, request to meet with the Massachusetts Housing Secretary to discuss, show the state that the three towns are unified and open to working with the state on possible solutions to the housing crisis. So, that was pretty much the email. And I, I immediately says, "Sounds good, putting it on the agenda," okay? And have now gotten further information as to what kind of precipitated this request. So Victor Norman contacted me today. This is a direct result to the fact that Senator Cronin, who is the Senator for their jurisdiction, okay, put forward a bill to change the zoning in Devens, specifically Vicksburg Square area, without even Senator Eldridge's knowledge. Um, and it is important to know that over 80% of Vicksburg Square is not in Senator Cronin's jurisdiction. It did fail, okay? The, it was, it was for the housing cap elimination, and, yeah, this is what Victor Norman sent me, about, well, it just says, "On any elimination, on the total number of residential units to be allowed in Devens, under said reuse plan and bylaws." Okay? She'll not apply to any submission of a developmental plan for unified permitting in accordance with, it doesn't matter. It, it failed, okay? So what this is now shown is that, so the three towns, very important to know, that the three towns, Air, Shirley, and Harvard, have an agreement with mass development, that if there's any zoning changes or anything like that, they have a super town meeting. There is no such agreement with the state. And what this has shown is that it's very easy for a Senator to, to submit a bill, to make a change that nobody really knows about, okay? So, this kind of puts it into this precarious situation. So what is recommended is, is that we work with Shirley and Harvard as far as scheduling a meeting with the Massachusetts Housing. We would like them to understand, the purpose being is that we would like them to understand that we need to be a part of the conversation, that any changes to Devens directly affects all of us, okay? It could also affect services, okay? And to just, all of a sudden, now, we all know, last year, they had formed housing, emergency housing over the winter, and we were all given like a 10-minute notice, okay? Now, no one was opposed to the idea, all right? But the problem is, is that it could have caused a real problem with any services that were being provided. And a little bit more of a 10-minute notice is necessary, especially since there wasn't like an emergency at that particular moment. You know what I'm saying? So I'm recommending that we further look into following up with this.
I agree.
Okay? And I would also like to request that I be the representative, and the reason why I'm asking for this request is because of my schedule. There's no guarantee that we would get like a two-weeks' notice for an appointment. It could be like, "Hey, show up in 48 hours," and so my schedule's flexible, so that's why I would ask to be the representative. Of course, if, I would keep you posted, and of course, if there was a three-week, you know, "Hey, we got three weeks before the appointment," we could readdress.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
So, and then, the Devens Jurisdictional Framework Committee meeting is July 12th, and that is in Shirley this quarter.
Okay.
And a discussion about all this, I believe, Mr. Norman intends to have on the agenda also, so.
Thank you. Uh, up next, we have approval of meeting minutes from June 6, 2023. I did not have any edits.
I had no issues. So I will make a motion that the meeting minutes from June 6, 2023, be approved or submitted.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Minutes are approved.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Oh, are you waving goodbye?
Yeah, I'm waving goodbye.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were trying to get your attention for a question. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 9:43 PM.
8:43?
8:43, I'm sorry.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for your time. Thanks, everyone who stuck it through the late hour.